Board member Drake.
Present.
Board member Nysel.
Present.
Board member Steen.
Here.
Board member Van Blarkum.
Here.
Supervisor Discofani.
Yeah.
Sorry.
First stage jitters.
Very nervous.
Not easy, but mine is.
No.
So the point of this special town board meeting was to talk about building inspector and some secretary hires. Have a couple of resolutions. You can so introduce.
So I do have a couple of questions that I think are probably more appropriate for an executive session. I apologize to everybody, but I'd like to call for an executive session to discuss the employment of a past, future, or present employee.
A second. Call the table.
All right.
We're gonna close. We'll go down into the office.
That's fine.
Okay, we'll go. Sorry, folks.
Do I come with you guys for notes?
No.
I gotta figure out this.
All right, I make a motion, we close the executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion, we reopen the regular special town board meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, there was no decisions made at the executive session, it was more information. And let's move on. We have two resolutions to hire secretary slash clerks.
I'm happy to make resolution fifty dash two zero two two, resolution to hire building zoning clerk. Whereas under section twenty of the town law, the town board shall designate all appointed officers and employees of the town. Therefore be resolved that the following personnel be appointed to the Shandaken Town Building and Zoning Department at the following rates. Olivia Mantia, fourteen dollars per hour, and move its adoption.
Second.
Board member Drake.
Yes.
Board member Nysel.
Yes.
Board member Steen.
Yes.
Board member Van Blarkum.
Yes.
Supervisor Discofani.
Yes. Resolution fifty one dash twenty twenty-two, resolution to hire assessors clerk. Whereas, under article twenty of the town law, the town board shall designate all appointed officers and employees of the town. Therefore be resolved that the following personnel be appointed to the Shandaken Town Assessors Department at the following rates. Christina Voorhees, fourteen dollars per hour, and move its adoption.
Second.
Board member Drake.
Yes.
Board member Nysel.
Yes.
Board member Steen.
Yes.
Board member Van Blarkum.
Yes.
Supervisor Discofani.
Yes. Shortly we'll be going into a workshop meeting. Just wanna say about the STR proposed draft law. It's years into working, we're trying our best to put things forward and get it on paper. I sent to the attorney our proposals from the committee of two years and everything that went with it, the exit reports and all that. I put together what I could draft out of that, things that I found on other town laws. Our attorney has advised that this be put in as a law in and of itself, it's not gonna be under zoning. With that designation, there's gonna be no grandfathering, no, you know, we had this before, it's all new. So there's that. And we will be able to, you know, come back in six months or a year, redo it if something isn't working. This is just an initial law. I think I put down three hundred max for the town. Right now, we looked at from the county, there's about two hundred and fifty, not including the places that are commercial, places that are, were counted, but they're actually out of town. Like they're called Mount Trumper, but it's up on Abbey Road, or Mount Tobias, and other outsturdy places. So, and I did one per person, one per entity, basically. I would like everybody to have a chance and an opportunity. I didn't know how many we had on the onset, so I didn't want people to be, oh, why I couldn't get in there. And we may loosen that up next year. Otherwise, I mean, we're not gonna take questions, we're not gonna take comments at this time. What we wanna do is, we wanna hash out what we have, and I haven't had a chance to talk with the board as a whole, to find out which way they wanna go. We may end up scrapping this whole thing and starting all over again. Does anyone else care to say anything to the public before we start the second part of our?
Are we starting right away, or are we gonna wait until six thirty?
I wanted to talk to the board.
Oh, that's right, you wanna address the board.
Yeah. Hi. And this in terms of the special meeting for tonight, was just dealing with the office and the building, needing a building inspector. I was just proposing an idea of in the interim, possibly if you would consider having a consultant building inspector. There's one particular person that does that now by trade, they work in a different municipality, but they also do consulting for other towns. And the scope of it looks like this is, you know, I'm the code enforcement officer, and I have the certification to approve any permit in our office that doesn't need to go to the planning board or zoning board. However, the workload and new commercial construction and new construction really requires a plan review, and to really go through the state codes and make sure things are being built appropriately. And it might behoove us for some of those projects while we're looking for a building inspector to use a consultant, the same way, the same way we do on the planning board with an engineer firm, and the same way our office does currently with Jakubowitz and Law, or our Law group, not the advisors you use, the advisors we use. The difference, though, it would be, the pay would have to be absorbed by the town. This isn't the applicant. Like, a planning board applicant pays for our engineer, but this would be in the interim while you find someone to consider. That's it.
Who's the consultant?
Warren Tutt would be who I would propose. But there may be other ones that do this as well.
Whoever's qualified.
Yeah.
You can choose.
I haven't told him that I was saying this to you tonight, but he, I just recently was on, doing some work with him on the side, and he mentioned that he is doing this now for these huge, you know, some towns, I mean, the projects are so huge, and he's like a codes savant.
Who?
Yeah, he's just, whenever, he wrote the book. Anyways.
He's very experienced.
Yeah.
You do have the, I may be saying this too forcefully, but you have the authority to hire an assistant, or whoever you need to help you through the job, as long as you stay within budget.
Well, I don't know what he charges.
No, I mean, with the year.
Oh, yeah, over the, within the year.
You have to keep, you know, you have to keep track, and I'll help you do that, or Barbara will help you.
I mean, I can tell you, currently, there's nothing in that office that I don't feel comfortable inspecting myself, except some things in front of the planning board, if they were approved, would immediately need a review from a building inspector of that caliber.
Right.
So this isn't necessarily for everything?
No.
For certain?
No, I mean, typically, not to just shake this off, but Shandaken's additions and decks, is what people are doing. And then heat, outside heating sources, generators, and things like that, and roofs and that and that. But we do have those huge, you know, fifteen pages of architect plans that require a plan review before we even issue the building permit, to make sure they're hitting the New York State Code correctly. And some, you know, and just, I just, I can't keep asking every contractor that I trust, and you guys, and my husband, and, you know, just to like, there's some construction stuff that would be great in the interim to get the advice from, while we don't have someone. But I hope that you, you know, I know you were looking and whatnot.
And we still have a name.
And I just, as a taxpayer, I don't wanna hold people up, saying we don't have a building inspector, when we do have some people out there that have been really great.
Right. Also, when we do get the STRs up and moving, which could be, you know, more than like two months from now.
Yeah.
We're gonna be needing some people to do just general inspections, and they don't have to be highly trained like you or Warren, they just need the.
Right.
What is it?
A building inspector. Safety inspector.
Building safety inspector.
And just to clarify, there's two things with the state, there's a BSI and there's a CEO. And BSI is, whatever their credential is, it's about half that a CEO goes through, and they have eighteen months. And with the state, that those classes are, you're based on their, when they're offering them. So you can have a building inspector that doesn't have a CEO certification, but is more than qualified to do building inspection in Shandaken.
Just for safety.
Fire and safety, or just existing construction, which is a lot of our permits, you know? We, we don't have, we don't have the land to be building all new residences.
Right.
It's a lot of just renovation to existing.
So I don't have to make a motion or anything?
I just wanted, I knew that you're having a special meeting tonight, I thought it was a great opportunity to be together and say, here's a concept that we can wrap our minds around, but I, you know, that was it. Yeah. Okay. Okay.
Make a motion with Jared?
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I guess we could just move right on, we'll, I need the motion that we open the workshop meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's tear this baby up.
Can I do a voice?
You can.
My turn?
The big, the big question that I have, that we all should have is, you know, I put in here a stipulation of, for the law, of four rooms or less. From what I understand with Austin County, when you go into five rooms and more, you're required to have water sample with most counties.
It's based on the number of occupants, not the number of rooms, so it's, at the eleventh guest, you're required to file with the county and submit water tests.
Okay.
I called, 'cause it, find out whether or not it pertained to my property.
It's the number of guests?
It's the number of guests.
Okay.
Yeah, number of guests.
And you said it's eleven?
I was told, it's been quite some time, I called back when I purchased my property to see if I needed to register the county if I ever opened. And I was told that no, and then it's the eleventh guest, but we definitely, I mean, that's hearsay for me at this point, because that was a phone call a long time ago, but that is my memory.
Okay. Well, referring back to our regular codebook, if you have five rooms or more, you're considered an inn or a hotel?
I never came across that one, just take your word for it.
Right. But we could, you know, this isn't the zoning section, so we could do whatever we want, we think, you know, five rooms are okay, or six rooms are okay.
And we, we talked about this briefly, and I did look into it, and I, it's very difficult to get the exact number if you punch in Shandaken as a target in Airbnb.
Right.
It actually doesn't limit your search to the strict town boundaries.
Right.
Of Shandaken, but I punched in ten or more guests, and I believe there were something like twenty places.
Right, and we were together downstairs.
Yeah, and I tried to narrow it down anyway.
And narrowed it down even less than that, so it is a big number of properties.
It's somewhere between, like, it could be anywhere from ten to twenty.
Right.
Hard to say, properties that have up to eight rooms, I think I found one that has eight bedrooms and sleeps sixteen people.
Right.
Not positive it's within our town line, 'cause like I said, you don't get final addresses.
Right, there are a couple of places like that.
So, and that leads to the question of, we have these properties that are running, that take more than ten guests, and then that, of course, becomes the question, it's not a maximum of ten guests or eight guests, because we're not counting people under sixteen.
Sixteen, right.
So now we have to check the age of guests while they stay, but that's two issues. The first issue is, what is the course of action for existing STRs operating that have more rooms than we want, according to this proposal?
That's a good question, and I, you know, for us to discuss, do we wanna make an avenue for people to go before this EBA and variance?
I mean, I prefer to have any and all STRs that we're gonna have operating in this town licensed as an STR. It came up repeatedly in the STR meetings that we didn't want the zoning board, or the planning board, or exemptions, or special use permits. We prefer the license, because if down the road that property became a problem property, a license can be revoked.
Right.
A special use permit can be revoked, but it's a costly, complicated procedure.
Right, that's why we're.
So if, if possible, I wanna fit as many good operating businesses of the type we want, or types we don't want, of the types we do want, licensed, instead of operating under special use permits, that's, that's my position.
Right, right. We could keep that, I think, and I think I should run this by the lawyer, but, you know, we can keep that as a, as a way to do it, but we can just move it, if you're doing more than four rooms, then you have to just go before this EBA for variance.
I, I would think more of just a, build, build into the fee structure.
Just do it right there and add it on.
That if you're of a sufficient size, you, you pay for a larger license, you pay a more expensive license, but not necessarily.
Right.
I mean, the thing that worries me about, it's not a specific criticism of any parts of the law, but my biggest concern of all this is the administrative overhead of actually running it through and making sure that we can do it, and I think the minimum number of administrative barriers is probably in our best interest, especially while we're.
I don't think it's that many places.
No, I wouldn't necessarily think that it was, but, I mean, to your, to your, to your point there, if the goal is, in fact, that have them all within a license and then.
We could just say, oh, hey, okay. Were there any other parts of the law that you guys wanna discuss?
It probably wouldn't come up in the first year, because, this is in regards to the, the limit of three hundred, so presumably we're below that, but part of what came to my mind is the proceduralization of, of actually the permit process there, of how are people putting in the permits? In fact, you know, how are you timestamping these, so that you know the person who's number three hundred from the person who's three hundred and one? Are they putting in, sending in an email with their PDF and putting in a check later?
Well, I'm assuming in the beginning, we'll have a license or an application online, they'll be able to download it, print it out, fill it out, mail it to the clerk. I think ideally, it goes from the clerk, to the assessors' office, to the building office, and with a checkmark from each, and then back to the clerk. Just to make sure that.
No, I, I understand the, sort of the transfer power there, but how would you, like, if, on Thursday, two hundred and eighty permits have come in, and then on Friday, thirty permits come in, how do you tell the difference between which twenty are pre-limit?
Are they first come, first postmarked, first received?
So.
First opened by the clerk, first approved?
I, I would, I would almost tend to think of either, the only way I see it is, either you have to, you have to deliver your thing, which is ugly, or digitally submit the application.
'Cause there's gonna be a timestamp on the digitally.
The email will have a timestamp, and then that can be parted, and so you're slotted in, you know?
Right.
Here's the first email, the second, the third, and fourth.
That's a great idea.
And then a subsequent person, of course, has to.
We have a lot of people who might be applying who are not necessarily online, and even if they're online, not really tech savvy, or like.
It could be either or.
They could get online, and they're not gonna do it.
Plus, it's, it's gotta, it's gotta come in with a check.
Well, that's the part that is, if you're doing it online, yes, you get the timestamp very nice, but then do you reach out and get the check? What if you're the three hundred, second person, you've already sent us a check? Do we, do we take your check?
But I think what we, I mean, like I said, we, we have, we have about two hundred and fifty.
It doesn't strike me as a first-year concern, but it is sort of the.
Well, I think in the second year, the.
The new ones get priority?
The priority's always gonna be those who already have a license.
They're gonna get first crack at it, right?
And are on good standing.
Right.
Would we be better off?
I mean, if you know a different way that we do.
Well, I mean, no matter how you do it, it gets a little bit tricky, right? So, okay, we could certainly have, you either send in an email with your PDF, or you mail it, but you get whatever timestamp you get, or you hand-deliver it, and you're slotted in wherever you happen to be, any one of those, no check included, a person wants us over to make sure that you filled all the requisite parts out. So you have indeed put your name in there, and you've indeed put in an address, you didn't send us an empty application. And then, okay, you're one of our first three hundred, or you're upon receipt, someone reaches out to the applicant and says, okay, your, your.
Application is processed.
Your application is processed, please, please provide payment. That could work. Alternatively, if we back off on the limit of three hundred, at least for the first year, it avoids that complication entirely, but then that's.
Why can't it just be first come, first served, and that's the rule?
Well, it can be first come, first served, but again, if you get a pile of mail that's multilevel.
If you wanna make money in the town of Shandaken, show up at town hall.
Well, so, and that would just be, the application process is, you need to bring it.
Yeah, I think the people that, that are very concerned about this issue will be here day one with their application filled out and ready to go.
That's true.
Well, so, my, my worry is that if you have three hundred and ten people who show up that first day, you gotta be in line, right?
Ten people should've showed up earlier.
It says we're gonna issue three hundred, what if the first twenty don't qualify?
Well, it's probably not, but if the law says three hundred, and we get you, I mean, it, it's probably not an issue, but it becomes something we have to do some of.
On the, on that section of it, something that actually already is an issue, it was very important throughout the entire discussions period of the STR committee, that we wanted to make residents a priority. That is not included in here, and in fact, portions of this proposal give priority to non-residents. And I, I, I would like to reintroduce the idea of whatever the cap is, however we do work that out, that there's a smaller percentage, I believe we proposed ten percent in the committee, for non-residents, if we go back to the STR committee's recommendations.
And that's, that ten percent has been a huge point of contention, in that it should probably be more of a fixed number, even that ten percent of total dwellable units was high, we thought. It was just put out there for.
Was it ten percent of dwellable units, or ten percent of the licenses given? I don't.
I believe it was dwellable units, but.
It is, it was of the, so, the STR committee proposed, any legal resident of Shandaken who is a resident host, i.e. rents lodging in his or her full-time legal residence, may apply for a Shandaken STR license. STR operation licenses in Shandaken granted to non-Shandaken residents, or Shandaken residents who are not resident hosts of the licensed property, shall be limited in number to ten percent of the currently existing number of dwelling units. I mean, whatever numbers we land on for that, it would be nice to.
Could you give me what that number would be?
Off the top of my head, no.
Okay.
Sorry.
I mean, I, I under.
Come to the right length of the role to figure that out.
Right, but I understand you even had trouble giving me a ten percent of, or what was the residence, how many residents we had.
How many residential pieces of par, how many residential parcels we have is the number I think you're talking about. Sixteen fifty in the last census?
That, that's what I have, too, thank you.
Of, of.
Of available dwelling u.
Available dwelling units.
Residents was something in the neighborhood of three thousand six hundred something, but I don't, that's an old number for me, I know it's changed a lot in the last couple of years.
Okay, well, I can, I can.
I don't wanna push that ten percent or the cap, but I think, I want, I would like to see that intent.
I understand that, and I, I do agree with it.
Okay, good.
One hundred percent. And I'll talk to Ben and see what kind of.
It's a hard number to nail down.
Yeah. I, I mean, I don't wanna do a ten percent, because it's a, it's a number that fluctuates so much, if, if we could do whatever it is, a hundred.
I mean, I think we could pick a number.
Yeah, that.
That's in the target area, and stick with that, and like the other number, these are things that can be adjusted, if all of a sudden somebody builds a hundred extra dwelling units up here, we can change the number.
You know, and if the goal is to protect full-time residents and ensure that they have, I don't know what the proper term is, right away, first, you know, first dibs?
First dibs.
It's a, right, first priority sounds more professional than first dibs. I think a hundred is, is a lot for, you know, corporations, and I know there's personal LLCs, but those people will also be there at the door, you know, it's, I think a hundred and ten percent is way too much, but we would have to nail down that number, and that's a larger discussion that, you know, after you talk to the attorney, we can figure out.
Now, do you want to lump in with non-residents, corporations, people who are residents but have their property in a corporate name?
Yeah, so personally, when we started the committee, a lot of that conversation started because we had received several inquiries from corporations, whether it was Sacramento, Denver, New Orleans, that we're looking to buy up.
Of course, of course.
Ten properties at a club, you know? During the STR committee meetings, we ran into the issue that, you know, I don't have a lot of experience with this, but people have personal LLCs to protect themselves.
Right.
So for me, and I don't wanna start a huge argument about this, but for me, that's a win-win if we're trying to keep actual corporations out, and you have a full-time resident who may be an LLC, and, you know, there's no price difference, at least that's not what it was proposed as, I think, I'm trying to remember.
Person versus LLC, no.
Yeah, but that person would essentially take a spot of a big corporation, which is a win-win, I know that's big-picture thinking from my part, and it's not necessarily the goal of the law, but, you know, it's just a food for thought.
So we'll, we'll keep the non-residents and the corporations in one section, and we'll do another for residents.
Do you guys have any thoughts on?
If you think, I mean, you think a hundred's too much for.
For the, for the non-owner occupied in LLC, yeah, I think that's too much.
So you wanna house seventy-five?
I don't know, what does, what does everybody else think?
Out of three hundred?
I mean, if we're, if we're talking three, let's just use three hundred for now. If we are saying three hundred, do, does anybody have any idea? We, we can, we can, we can get this, 'cause we have the STR list from the county, the one I have is almost three years out of date now. I'm sure it is, you did get the new one, we can just scan that and get an idea of what percent currently is.
Yeah, I was, that's a, that's a question, how many are now, you know, how many corporations?
'Cause if that number's five, I don't wanna propose seventy-five.
Right.
If that number's five, then let's go with them, if that number is seventy, then, well, do we want, how do we wanna deal with that?
All right.
I think, I would like that piece of information.
I'll spread that around, and.
Yeah.
I think even, but even, even some of those have somebody's name on them, but yet the property is in a corporation.
Well, if it's a corporation like, I, it's somewhere there was wording, I tried to just find it now, and I can't, but, if the property is listed in a corporation, then in order to get an STR license, we need to know who the owner of the corporation, all of the people listed.
Who the executive is.
And if all the people listed in a corporation are, you know, Bob and Jim Shandaken, then they're local residents, the fact that they have put their property into an LLC to protect themselves, and that's why they do it, if they, if they get sued by a guest, they're suing the corporation, not taking away their personal life savings, I, I don't have a problem with that LLC being treated like resident, I'm not gonna start talking about whether or not corporations are people. But if you are a Shandaken resident, and you've formed a corporation to protect yourself while you run a business, I'm sure you do it for the rose, I do it as well, many people do, I, I happen to know for a fact, we have a couple sitting in the house at the moment. If you're a resident, you're a resident.
I'm sure it is, you did get the new one, we can just scan that and get an idea of what percent currently is non-resident corporations.
Yeah, I was just, how many are now, you know, how many corporations?
Cause if that number's five, I don't wanna propose seventy-five.
Right.
If that number's five, then let's go with them, if that number is seventy, then, well, do we want, how do we want to deal with that? I think, I would like that piece of information.
I'll spread that around and.
Yeah.
I think even, but see, even some of those have somebody's name on them, but yet the property is in a corporation.
Well, if it's a corporation like, um, um. I, it's somewhere there was wording, I tried to just find it now and I, I can't, uh, but. If the property is listed in a corporation, then in order to get an STR license, we need to know who the owner of the corporation, all of the people listed.
Executive is.
And if all the people listed in a corporation are, you know, Bob and Jim Shandaken, then they're local residents. The fact that they have put their property into an LLC to protect themselves and that's why they do it, if they, if they get sued by a guest, they're suing the corporation, not taking away their personal life savings, I, I don't have a problem with that LLC being treated like resident. I'm not gonna start talking about whether or not corporations are people, but, um, if you are a Shandaken resident and you've formed a corporation to protect yourself while you run a business, I'm, I'm sure you do it for the rose, I do it as well. Many people do, I, I, I happen to know for a fact, we have a couple sitting in the house at the moment. If you're a resident, you're a resident, I, I think, and if you've got a corporation, I'm not gonna call that corporation a resident, but I'm gonna treat you as a resident even though you've got an LLC protecting you, aight?
It's not a discussion for tonight, but I think that.
We might want the lawyer to weigh in.
At, at another, uh, meeting that we should have in the future, um, I, you know, I'm proposing that we have a, a lower cost for the residents and a higher charge for non-residents.
That was another, I was gonna say, that was definitely in the STR recommendations as well, that I agree with, yeah.
Okay.
Anything we can do to favor the residents.
Okay.
On that, the other one in here that is not directly related and I, I can't find it right now, I'm not having a good luck under the, oh, here we go. Under what they cannot do, which section says what you cannot do? I thought I saw.
Enforcement penalties violation, section eight.
An STR shall not, uh, and maybe, maybe the wording has changed, I'm having trouble finding it, but it basically said.
Notification requirements or.
And if it's gone now, then it's not a problem since I can't.
Short-term rental regulations, license requirements.
Shall not.
Section four.
That's the shall not I saw.
There was something about not permitting STRs in, um, multifamily homes or in a second dwelling on your property. And if we're only allowing STRs in whole houses. Sorry, what page?
Page one, bottom.
Just get him right over the page.
Shall not.
Top of page two.
Yeah.
Operate in a two, so yeah, thank you very much. Uh, so it's section three, A three, operate in a two-family or multifamily dwelling or in multiple dwellings on a single property. What that says is that the only kind of STRs we're gonna have are single-family properties, which means the only people who'll be able to have them are people who don't live in that property, which means we're only allowing it for people out of town.
Yeah, that's, that's a little ambiguous, but my, my problem with two-family or multifamily dwellings is that, um, you have two of those dwellings that are, uh, long-term and one is a short-term, so there's people coming and going all the time. And I didn't mean for multiple, I, you know, because I want only one person. Either you own a property, not next to you, but, uh, you, or you have a, an accessory, that you're doing it on your accessory, or you own another property that you're doing it there, but I don't want you to do the accessory and the primary. Then you have two STRs going.
Yeah, I, I actually didn't have a problem with somebody owning more than one, we have a number front, but people own multiples where that we haven't had a problem with them, so.
But my issue is with housing here.
No, I understand that, I understand that.
If we let everything become STRs, then we have no housing.
Well, I don't think we're going to let everything become an STR, but at the same time, this, if, if there's a different intent, that the way this is worded right now is definitely a problem that really only.
Well, my intent is that we don't.
Only wealthy people who can afford a complete second property.
Well, unwealthy.
Or, or corporations who aren't here, who buy up a property to solely run it as an STR, uh, will be able to do this, we will only have absentee homes.
The hope is that somebody who is a second homer and they, you know, they come up here and while they're not coming up here, they'll get some extra money income by renting their place while they're not here.
Right, but that's the only person who would be able to rent according to this rule.
Or somebody with an accessory.
You, this specifically says no to that.
Exactly.
Okay.
I, I wanna dissuade people from thinking that, I, I mean, multiple fam- multiple dwellings for an STR, but because I said that already, then that doesn't make sense. Or we said that.
But what, so what if someone owns a home that is a two-family and they live in one side and they want an STR at the other side?
We can strike the multiple dwellings on a single, because we already hit it by saying only one unit per person. As an STR.
Right, and how do we deal with all the existing STRs that run that are where someone owns more than one? There's some very well-run, respected, that nobody has trouble with in the town, we, we've got, I don't wanna go naming any of them right now.
You don't have to do that.
I think we all know somebody who owns more than one in this town.
But we also know a lot of people who only own one.
Yes.
And we would like to, uh, create more of an environment where if somebody wants to move here and, and they can find someplace to live. I would, I'm hoping for more people to do long-term rentals.
I mean, I think a lot of us would like to see that happen, it's, it's very.
We can legislate that by only legislating.
I don't think we can legis- I, I don't, I don't, I don't know that I want to legislate what everybody can and can't do with their property without giving that a bit more consideration. That, I mean, that was one of the, another one of the points we talked about quite a bit, uh, in, in the committee, that if someone has a piece of property and the, the reason they can afford that property is that they are running STRs out of it, they turn around and say, no, you have to do a long-term rental, a lot of people have no desire to do long-term rentals. They have multifamily properties that they wanna rent out part-time and other times they wanna use to have family and friend visit. And if you're renting to a long-term renter, you can't do that, and a lot of them don't want to deal with the, uh, the laws that have changed in New York State as they apply to long-term renters. It, it is much more challenging to navigate and deal with those laws and a lot of people have specifically chosen and for us to say, listen, we know you want this property and you've got two guest houses on it, you're only allowed to STR one of them.
It's not like.
I don't know that that's gonna solve the housing problem.
It's not like you're having another property that it's just gonna sit vacant, you can rent it long-term.
Well, but what if they don't want to? What if it's not, uh, what if it's only a three-season house?
What if they can't find a good tenant?
What if they can't find a good tenant?
But, I, I mean, it's not like, um, renting long-term, it just happened, I mean, people did that for many, many years.
Yeah, but it's also implying that we have a housing crisis because of short-term rentals, which is also not the case.
Yeah.
They're, they're related, sure, but they're not, you know, they're not directly.
Eliminated an STR doesn't turn it into a long-term rental.
We had a housing crisis long before COVID nineteen caused our housing stock to soar through the roof and everybody moved here. I'm not saying I don't agree with you, I'm not saying that we don't need a solution to the housing crisis, but I don't know that this exactly pertains to a long-term housing crisis. I'm not, you know, I don't have the answer to that, we, we tried for two years to find the answer to that and we couldn't, you know, I don't know without government subsidize.
You have to, you have to be brave and make us, take, take stance. And not saying that you weren't and that you guys did great work. And everybody has their opinion and, I mean, I'm not making the decision, we're all making the decision, we'll, we'll come to some kind of conclusion here.
That's certainly one of the tougher questions though, you know, is how do you find the middle ground there? Because, you know, like it was said, there's people that have these STRs that are exactly what we want in the town, you know, and that, you know, nothing's, nothing bad is coming of it, but at the same time, we do need, you know, more long-term rentals, but I don't, I don't think one.
We can't push our housing crisis problem off onto people who own multifamily houses.
Yeah.
If you own a multifamily house, you're responsible to house our people.
It's just a very, um, muddled, you know, the, the waters are kinda muddy there.
So you don't wanna, so you don't wanna put a, a restriction on how many STR somebody has?
I don't, I don't think that was the consensus, consensus coming out of the committee.
Okay.
And I also, just speaking from experience, every time, cause this conversation came up a lot.
Almost every.
And every time we were making progress, somebody would be like, what about the housing crisis? And we would take ten steps back. And so I think as it pertains to short-term rentals, you know, you keep it in the back of your mind, but the economic benefit that's being provided, you have to look at that in correlation to housing. You know, there's not necessarily people moving here to, to work and look for an apartment. I say that as a young person here, I mean, we, we, I own a home, you own a home, you rent, it's not easy to find a rentable apartment. Ten years ago, when I was looking to rent an apartment, it wasn't easy to find a rentable apartment, whether it's in Pine Hill or Phoenisha. You know, they're few or far between, they always have been, um, I just don't know, I think it complicates the conversation when, which, you know, if that's where we're gonna go, that's where we're gonna go, but I think it overcomplicates the goal of this to start saying like, we need to solve the housing crisis right now because, um.
It's not.
And again, I'm, I'm open to. No, 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 I know, I, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be contentious, I'm just saying.
No, 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 I get it, I get it, I get it, I get it. I, I just, I don't know about you guys and I'm sure some people have come to you and spoken to you about, you know, we gotta limit what's going on, it's going, it's going crazy, if you don't feel that's the case, if, I mean, we could just take out all this only one per person thing.
I, I mean, to me, it's more important to have a cap on the number in the town than how many individual.
And it's also a license, so the whole idea was that if somebody has a property where they have, for example, we know somebody that has three cabins or whatever, right? And they're all on the same property.
Right.
But they would be limited to the one license.
Right.
You know, and we.
One license and then two other.
Right, so where, where you say it's one building, you know, if you have two cabins and that's your property and you're, whatever, you're a non-resident or that's your only license.
Okay.
I don't personally see a problem with it, I'm more than open to that discussion, of course, but, yeah.
Was there anything else in the law that?
I had a question, um, just because I wanna get you guys' opinion and Sarah, if you wanna chime in at any point. We had talked about CFOs, right? During the committee?
Right.
And in inspections, uh, page four, section six. It says, uh, at all times, the entirety of the STR premises on presentation of proper credentials. I think the consensus coming out was that we have way too many properties that are pre-existing non-conforming in this town for that to be a reasonable request, and if we're gonna have. Uh, sorry, section six, right here, proper credentials, I just don't know what you mean by proper credentials and if we're gonna have, like you were saying, a safety inspector go to these places. Does, I just wanna make sure proper credentials doesn't necessarily mean CFO, cause that could potentially wipe out half.
No, no, the, the CFO, it's either a CFO or a, a state uniform code pass.
Okay.
You know, it's a basic safety inspection, to come in and make sure you have smoke alarms, fire extinguisher and, you know, there's railings going up to the front door.
Absolutely, I just didn't, I want maybe, I don't know if there can be more clarity put into the law.
The lawyer put that in.
Okay.
He thought it was, it was best.
Cool.
You're saying section six inspections.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Yeah, it was just a word that popped out, cause I remember having that conversation very clearly where we were talking, somebody on the committee who ran an Airbnb or a short-term rental rather, we were talking about CFO and at the first, when the conversation first came up, it's like, oh yeah, no-brainer, certificate of occupancy, that's an easy way to, and she was like, well, you know, I have a, a pretty successful place and I guess that eliminates me because she has one window that wouldn't comply in her kitchen, you know? But I think she would pass a, a safety inspection by all means, so I just wanna make sure that's not gonna hinder the process.
Well, there's a little bit more to it than that, I mean, some people put, uh, a bedroom in a closet that has no secondary ingress.
Hundred percent.
And, you know, that's not.
I just wanna make sure it's at the discretion of the, the inspector.
Absolutely.
Okay, cool.
I'm not doing the inspection.
Also under section six inspections, item number one, on smoke detectors, um, I believe that falls short of national code.
We, sorry to interrupt, but we had this discussion at RIBOP today, he, this was thrown in by the lawyer.
Yeah.
Just the trick and he said check out of me and I was, I don't have my card to see.
I believe the code is one in every bedroom, in addition to one in the hallway and one, so we should just say, so when they update national code, we are automatically updated, instead of trying to quote it, why don't we just say what we did from the committee? That we have to comply with National Fire Safety Code regulations as it pertains to smoke detectors, carbon monoxide exits and, you know, um.
Right.
That pretty much is.
You know, I'm, I'm pretty sure we're one, um, smoke detector short in this wording.
Yes, but we're gonna be house, it's just, there's a one, we just have a CFO, that's open concept and the two rooms and the eliminated one.
Yeah.
They do have to have a little extra.
But that's why if we just say it has to comply with national regulations, we don't have to worry about the wording here, let them worry about the wording.
They're just kinda blank, is it?
Yeah, comply with Na- National Fire.
Yeah, I did this more as a, you know, as a, a sheet for people who were filling out their application, so they know what's going to be expected of them. When, and, and if I put that, uh, net compliant with the National Safety Code regulations, they'll have to look it up and, and that's fun too.
Well, this is the law, I mean, the actual application could certainly have a, a link to here's what the code is. I mean, the, the application could be a little more helpful than the law, but, yeah.
Right, you could say, you know, it has to match the code and the link posted right below it and.
Yeah.
You could, it'll tell you exactly what you need. If, you know, that's the online version.
And also, um, you know, the, the lawyer did tell me, um, so because it's not under zoning, we don't have to, I don't know if I said this, we don't have to send it to the planning board or ZVA or, uh, the county planning board, but I do plan on sending them when we clean it up and finalize it. I'll send it to those boards, just for them to know what we're going forward with.
Sorry, some of the letters changed since we're here. I'm looking for section three, what used to be so, I don't know, section three G, notice of change of the host or owner. Yes, here we go, it is, it's still three G. Emergency contact documents, um, when the host or host contact information changes, the owner must within one business day provide written notice to the cordon. I think a day is a bit, I mean, I would love to stay updated with information and in the technology age, it is technically possible, but that's not written notice. Do we actually think that anytime anything changes, uh, um, somebody changes carriers in their cell phone and moves to a new number, that same day, they've gotta make it here and hand Joyce a piece of paper, or not Joyce, but the code enforcement officer? Sorry, you're in Joyce's desk, I got you confused.
No.
Um, I, I think maybe we can give them more than one day to notify us of a change of information. And in the other direction, we're obligated to inform them in one day of something, or maybe that's gone now. But may, maybe it seems, it just seems a little unreasonable, um, to give some.
How much time do you want?
I don't, I don't know, one day just sounds short to me.
Seven days.
Seven days, seven days seems, yeah, I think that's, I think that's, uh, just, uh, a little better.
It's business days, you wanna just make it five? Does that seem easier?
You make it five, it's, 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 it works out the same too and it's easier. I just have to go, my daughter just texted me and asked me to come home. I think she made cupcakes, you can all come over if you like. It's gonna be the same first come, first served thing with the. There's only a dozen, so. Uh, here's one, this, um, I'm gonna say upfront, I totally agree with it, but I think we need to make a statement about it. Uh, hosts shall provide the ability to make an emergency telephone call. This was, this came up a lot in the committee meetings and I know a lot of people, uh, you might even hear grumbling in the audience, if there was one here, that, well, we can't get landlines, I think we have to be clear that when we say the ability to make emergency telephone calls, your property either needs to have a landline, be in cell coverage will count, or have internet access unless somebody make a wifi call will count. Uh, I did a check today in my same little Shandaken Airbnb zone, I found four Airbnbs that do not claim to have wifi, so I, I think that that's a reasonable request to say, um, that yes, a lot of people speak to me about it, I know it was argumentative during the committee, but we thought it was important if someone gets snowed in, injured, hurt, they have to be able to call for help. I just wanna address that one, cause I know a lot of people were concerned about it, but.
I was at a fire where somebody had to drive two miles down the road, be able to make a call to the fire department.
And that, yeah, and if it's, if it's a renter, who is one thing when a resident lives and that's.
Yeah.
But when a renter shows up and doesn't realize and finds out and they're stuck in the woods and they decided to split wood for the first time and chop their foot off.
Yeah.
A two-mile drive is tough.
It's tough.
The only thing that comes up with that is that if we lose power.
There goes your phone.
Or there goes your phone, right?
Well, and that's what we said.
It's an extenuating circuit.
The host has provided the ability.
Okay.
I mean, copper phone lines go down too.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can't. Yeah, we can't make the, the owner responsible to guarantee technology never fails.
Sometimes spectrum goes down without the, you know, power going down. I just, I just didn't wanna get into the-
We wanna see best effort.
Yeah, I didn't wanna get into the realm of, oh, if you, you know, now you have to have a generator, you know what I mean? I just wanted to make sure it wasn't going that far.
It is when you could chase in circles forever, but I think as long as we are acknowledging that, hey, you got cell coverage, you're good. Oh, hey, you got internet, you're good. You've got an actual phone line, you're good. Not all three, not guaranteed to always work. Something so that a person isn't stranded.
Okay. I have a quick question, uh, might be able to be answered fairly quickly. Um, so this licensing process, this is all going through the clerk?
I, I'm imagining it going through the clerk, but I think in the beginning, we need to have some kind of a, and I haven't put it down yet, but I, it'll initially go to the clerk, but I think the clerk should pass it to the assessor's office and the building office, so that everything can get checked off. We know if there's, you know, any, uh, outstanding violations on the property, they can't get a, a license. Uh, and we know if that, all the information they give is, is up to date, and brace will be able to tell us all that. So I, I think it should be, I know it's gonna be an onslaught in the beginning, and we're gonna use all our secretaries to jump in and, and help out.
Okay.
Yes.
Just acting, Liz, I'm not really gonna take no work for myself anytime, but I do intake of code permits every day. My office is very well versed in intake, and we also have a file that we're gonna refer these applicants to the violations, or to every history of their parcel. And, and there's a lot of language, and I'm glad to ask this, to see how the consul, see how the CEO's checking out here, and the CEO's checking out here, but if that lapse between clerk and CEO, I just don't know if it's necessary. I think it should just, I think it's, there's a lot of law, potential for laws, or potential for mismanagement, I guess, but not just send it to the code enforcement, the building permit office, that it's just permits for everything else.
Yeah, I mean-
I know that-
Joyce does dog licensing, and this license and that, but-
Her permits, yes.
Burn permits.
No, I just, I just think that, like, I could-
I didn't wanna overwhelm you either.
I understand, I just think that, um, like, for instance, it's, we're gonna take 300 permits, we'll take 300 licenses, and within the first 90 days, I, I don't know, I just see recipe, a recipe for a bit of disaster in terms of the efficiency of turning the permits around for people.
Okay.
And, um, just by adding another office, that's not, it's diverse as intake as my office is.
Okay.
So, listen, I just created a whole new job. I don't know, but I just see the language, like, I, I perhaps can trigger a page in here, and I see the CEO's doing something, and then I see the CEO's doing something, and the CEO ultimately gonna have to refer violation, violation. I just think it makes it more cohesive for the CEO to do the intake.
Okay.
Do you don't want anything to get lost in translation?
They just don't even, that office doesn't even support these files, and these files are between the assessor's office and the building office.
Right.
Who, I already do municipal searches, I already do these intakes on all these bill permits. I can literally go through every STR, I can tell you if they're gonna stay or not, just by my job, a lot of it every day.
Great point, great point. It'd be much more efficient to just go through your license.
I know the corporations, I can tell you, I can tell you if I issued permits, who has what, and when they're not sharing.
Okay. And we'll, we'll, we'll try and get a better program for you.
Yeah. Listen, I think that using Joyce's, you're talking to our office, is an awesome approach. I just don't wanna hold up tax payers.
Okay.
I don't wanna hold a good process for people.
Alright, good point. I know the intent here, 'cause we talked about it, but, uh, it's written in completely in the copy received here. Section three, letter J. It just says, "Non-permanent structures, tents, trailers, RVs, and other camping units for use as short-term rentals," period. There's a part of that sentence that didn't make it.
Just take out defined and regulated, under.
I don't have defined and regulated for this.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. The camping units are prohibited for use as short-term rentals? J, non-permanent-
Oh, it's on the print, it's on my digital, okay, so it got updated after I read it, okay.
Cool.
That's all, I needed something else.
I think it's fine the way that-
Section three, letter J.
Page two.
Oh, okay, so I did make it in here. I was using the word document, it was sent earlier.
That's what I asked you first, you should have said something.
I was just staring at it.
Just, um, Kevin and I just had a short, uh, exchange, uh, this is just a terminology thing. Host, whom we referred to, and people actually work under the position of property manager. Maybe we just wanna include the term property manager under section two definitions. 'Cause you, you know, since we live in the Airbnb world, even though we call them STRs, the host is the owner, but the owner, the host, may have hired a property manager, do we want to-
So you wanna just delete host and call it property manager?
I think, I think it's more clear. Um, yeah, 'cause many, if you are an Airbnb host, you are the owner. And I know we are making an STR law, but I think we have to kinda nod that STR laws are all about Airbnb. Um, maybe we just wanna call that the property manager, make it clearer.
And, and the exit report actually called, I, I, taking it all in, so I might've skipped over it, but called for that to be a prerequisite with your license, that if you were not within 30 minutes, or whatever we end up deciding, that you have the information for who the property manager is that will be available.
I think that's in here, yeah.
Yeah.
We need to know who the property manager is if you're not there. And they, someone has to be nearby.
Yeah.
The 30 minutes is under the host definition there?
Yeah. Thirty by phone.
And one hour in person.
One hour in person. And that was based on how long it might take you to get from one end of Shandaken to the other. I think Rob did the test drive.
Staying within the speed limit, of course.
We didn't ask questions. Not everybody has such a fine machine. I'm just gonna say the penalties and violations, there's a lot of legal speak, that'll take a few reads to get through.
Yeah, that wasn't me at all.
No, I could, yeah, this has got lawyer written all over it. And I think it's the tone of what we were saying before, but- I think that was the, I think that's-
Proof of property insurance, would that also include flood insurance if in a floodplain? Uh, that's, uh, section four.
I don't think that's necessary, I mean, flood insurance is for your mortgage company or something, but I, we just wanna make sure that you have some kind of slip and trip liability insurance, that if someone gets hurt, that covers it.
It's a bit outside my field, would, would, would normal insurance cover a guest?
You would have to ask your insurance company.
I don't think mine, uh- So maybe instead of property insurance, it's actually guest insurance, or insurance for-
I don't know, we accept liability when you're working on your home, and that policy is even like, it's to cover, like, you can, yeah, it's, it's for working on your own home, I don't know where, I don't know, I'm not an insurance-
You would have to talk to your insurance company, I mean, I, I think if you're bringing, I mean, you, you would know with your place, you, you have guests, you have-
Well, I have tenants, and, and I have a, I have a renter's, uh, insurance policy, that explicitly covers that. But what, just, we've got as one of our requirements, proof of property insurance, maybe what would be better is not proof of property insurance, but proof of guest insurance.
Liability.
Yeah.
It's called landlord insurance.
Landlord.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Technically.
Okay.
So that's the same.
This is a special, this is a special branch of insurance, and you always, uh, ensure that your agent, that they actually cover it in these. Uh, uh, so we, we have that covered pretty much, we use it normally.
Regular policies would definitely cover it.
I think that's a reminder, they're stupid if they are.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, home owners.
So we should probably maybe modify that line there, to just-
Right, what line was that?
Uh, this is on page three, number five.
I, proof of property insurance, oh yeah, that should be, um, the right kind. And let's just, let's just, we have excellent sources here, but let's just confirm whether it, is there a difference with basic landlord long-term rental insurance, for, as I believe, many insurance companies recognize a difference between long-term renters and short-term renters, and issuing insurance policies.
I, I know mine does, mine is very explicit, long-term.
Mine did in Brooklyn, too.
We got a good nod from the crowd.
Yeah, the, all our experts are nodding, we're good.
Uh, it's page three, uh, item five, it's in section four.
Section four, A five. How complicated is the, uh, New York State Uniform Code, before I ask if anybody has it?
Which, which one?
That's what I thought it said.
Is it the energy code, or are you talking?
It just says, again, I'm still on page three, so I'm in, uh, B two, the residence has a valid CEO, CFO, or is in compliance with New York State Uniform Code.
Right, I mean, yeah.
I know we touched on this before.
It's a basic fire inspection, where you go in, and you have the proper amount of smoke detectors, you have, uh, fire extinguishers where they should be, you have railings on your steps, you have a window in every bedroom.
Is it, is it simple enough that we're, I got the impression that it's not that simple, from the start.
No, it is.
Okay, okay.
And you go to the-
Is there a way to spell out which New York State Uniform Code we want them?
Like, I think, wait, please-
No, I get the whole thing, I'm looking for-
It's like, you have a CFO, or you pass a fire and safety inspection.
Should we say that, then, you've passed the fire and safety inspection?
I think, 'cause you keep referring to it as fire and safety.
Well, and-
Are there New York State Uniform Codes that would not apply?
And fire safety?
Well, this just says with the New York State Uniform Code.
Yeah, um-
I feel that's inadequate, that we've gotta be more specific to which portion of the code, as I-
No, I, can I, Kevin's an example for me, Kevin's home predate, you've had your home forever, it's been there forever. As it sits, it doesn't meet a lot of code requirements in stairways, with, inside.
I fall down all the time.
So does he not get an STR, does that, but he couldn't have not passed by a-
He can't have an STR, 'cause no one wants to live with him.
That's not true.
No, it's, I'm just using your example, 'cause your hard reports are, but your home-
No, my home is eighteen ten.
But your home could pass a fire and safety inspection, I know that, 'cause I know you have all the proper things.
No, I'm-
If you had a guest, but the stairwell is not meeting the requirement.
I know, so that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I don't think we want it to say that you have to be in compliance with the New York State Uniform Code. We want to say you have a CFO, or pass a fire and safety inspection.
I don't think a CFO warrants a, not, you still might not pass a fire and safety inspection.
There's that, too. There appears to be a New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code.
There's, yeah, it's, well, it's-
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm looking for, I think we need to be specific which-
Oh, right, yes, yes.
New York State Uniform Code, 'cause there's a New York State Uniform Code on, on automobiles.
There's, it's on, I mean, everything.
Exactly, so we just need the complete wording of the right code that we want to use here, instead of being generic.
Plenty of you all have CFOs, but plenty of your houses do not meet my C.
I know, my jacuzzi's not big enough for you.
I don't think that they really, I think you don't-
So instead of an-
Well, you may have a C E, CFO that was issued 10 years ago, that will not meet the latest round, it's a-
We don't have an exit sign that works, you know?
So instead of a CFO, should we just justify-
Can we just agree that we need to work on the wording of that one?
So what I'll do is, instead of saying the New York State Uniform Code, I'll say the New York State Uniform Fire and Safety Code.
Yes.
Is that, okay, that's exactly what I was looking for, thank you.
And did, what, did you get, having the verbiage of CFO in there from your exit report, is that why you even mentioned it?
It, this was from the lawyer, but a bit from the exit report.
Do we wanna just have the fire and safety code, and, and the C, CFO doesn't get you a pass on the fire and safety code? Do we want a fire and safety inspection regardless?
Regardless.
That's, that's what I'm getting from our building department.
I mean, even though you have a CFO-
'Cause we say or at the moment, we're saying or, but I'm hearing a desire for an and from our building department. It says, "Has a valid certificate of occupancy, or," I just-
And be in compliance, okay.
I've watched my conjunction junction.
And in-
I was asking what our, what the building person, it doesn't mean it's a done deal, I'm asking questions, everybody.
And in compliance?
Well, it's, it's a thing, we, we were before saying it was one or the other, but then you started saying both.
We could just say-
I was fine with one or the other.
One, okay, the fire-
'Cause at the same time, if we have to go into fire and safety inspections of every property-
Let's get rid of CFO.
That's what I was wondering where you would put that in, is it because this exit report, I think the exit report once said you have to have a CFO, not a STR.
Right.
It was originally proposed by some members of the STR committee, that you require a certificate of occupancy, and we worked around that by providing the alternative of follow fire and safety inspection. So it was a one or the other.
I, I have started thinking that when we're across this whole thing, if you're asking, me, as a code reporter, I think anything-
I was asking your opinion for code course.
Anything that makes money off of their home, whether it's their hotel, I think everything, I think a restaurant, everybody should have a fire and safety inspection. When you're hosting, when people are staying and exchanging money to be in your facility, I think everyone should have a fire and safety inspection. But that's because I have a fire and safety code instructor, and I would be safety first, and I'm worried about what-
At least one, I mean, and, and I'm not, I know I have it written in here that an annual fire and safety inspection is required, but if we have for the one, for each, uh, application, and when they initially apply, or in that first three months, once you have it, I mean, it's unlikely you're going to change your house that much, but I think every couple of years would be ample for two or three years.
You just have to find out the way we define it for other commercial properties, and the way they state codes defines it for properties in the playoffs.
Typically for commercial properties, it's annually.
Just, we have to figure out how we're gonna handle the capacity of an additional 300 inspections every year. Are, are we, just 'cause it's, it's ended with a semicolon in my copy, um, E one, the owner pays a renewal license fee? Will that be the same as the original fee?
E one, the owner pays the license fee, the owner has rented the property for at least once over the 12 months, the owner has, do you wanna do and?
No, I was just wondering what we're thinking, will the renewal fee be the same as the original? Is it gonna be the same, is a renewal the same cost as an original?
Without the application fee.
Without the application fee.
I'm assuming there's an application fee, and a license fee, and a license fee will be renewed every year.
Okay. It'll depend on every amount of fees, I guess.
And there in fours where we say, you know, it just has to pass the uniform, fire and safety. We could change the town clerk on five for notifications, we could change that to the C P O, if that's what you want to do.
They're just the building and zoning office.
The building and zoning office, right.
Is this a good neighbor flyer already made?
Yeah, I have a rough draft of it, didn't I send you, Hoppie?
I don't know, maybe. But that's, that's where we're going.
I I didn't focus on that at this point. I remember at first it said.
Neither, we're just focused on. It's just a brief thing.
I I mean, I get it, I just didn't.
Yeah, welcome here to property boundaries, be quiet.
Yeah.
Some other.
Have fun.
Have, oh, yeah, there was that.
Just got an official name, that's all.
On that be quiet note, sorry, there we are, restrictions on noise applicable, applicable under separate ordinance, um.
We have a couple of ordinances in our code book that give, you know, and they.
But I'm an expert on that particular ordinance.
Yeah.
I I uh and um I will state for the record, uh, unequivocally, um, it's pointless. We can't enforce it, so if we're, that's one of the codes in our town code we have to revisit, we currently have an unenforceable noise. We have a word I can't say.
Yeah.
Uh, we can't enforce it, our noise ordinance as is.
Not without a decibel meter.
Right, we don't have the uh the the equipment or the training.
But even the ordinance now is like a lawnmower.
Yeah, basically, if mowing your lawn is against the law in this.
Any generator is against the law.
Any generator ever, um, sitting under front porch, if your rocking chair squeaks too loud, you could get in trouble. So we just, since since it's here, let's just all be aware, we have to revisit that ordinance. And if, again, if I'm not mistaken, that garbage requirement actually is our town garbage requirement.
Yeah, I just threw it in there, just like.
Oh, it's good for the S T R people to know it.
The parking thing and the sound.
It's not anything different than anybody else has to do.
And I don't know if you noticed, but I did take out the the water test thing, I just think that if people have a place, they would, if they feel there's an issue, they would get their water tested.
I I was thinking, um, yeah, that.
I mean, nobody wants to make their their guests sick, everything.
Personally, I agree with you. I've got a couple former S T R committee members' voices going in my head right now over that one, and it's them. Uh, they are the reason that made it in, um. You're required to have one for your business.
Only for the restaurant.
Right, oh, for the size.
Because I have four rooms, I'm not required to do.
Certain inn and motel owners in this town made a lot of um noise about that one, so that one might, we might hear some noise for it to come back. I would think it's just like we're not going to make a rule about you have to keep your S T R clean, because again, you're going to want to, because you're going to want to, so having palatable water, potable water, seems like something that they should all do, but.
They would all want to do.
I would think that the owners of the hotels in our town would want to have potable water, and yet they're required to test it. That would, I'm merely conveying the argument that was presented to the committee.
I understand, I understand.
Especially if you're on town water, I mean, if you're on town water, I don't think.
It's a New York State Health Code thing that if you have more than four rooms, you have to do it, or if you're a hotel or a restaurant, you have to do it.
Yeah.
Somebody got sick up in some park in Washingtonville, and they didn't test the water until they opened the shandigan day festivities.
I think that's all I have for now. Not expecting much public feedback, so I think we'll probably be done.
Thanks.
Yeah, my penalties and violations portion was so much smaller.
It's like one line, now it's two pages.
That's something I've been confused about, if this is not a zoning law, if it's just a standalone law and it's not a zoning, then why then who is a lawyer enforcing this stuff, or is it a court?
Uh, that we'll have to talk to Ben about, we'll talk to Ben about specifics. It's going to go before a judge, no matter what, just as it, as if it does now.
Absolutely, but in some cases, that's represented by the town's lawyer.
Right.
Because it's not a zoning law.
Right.
Which would, then I have to take, you know, I have to go to court for those other cases.
Right.
But in this situation, if it's not a zoning law, I mentioned, I I think it's interesting that he used code enforcement as the person that sees it through, and then not just the lawyer.
Right.
That's for the town that sees it through.
Right.
Which is something to get clarity on, I think.
Yeah, yeah, you and I should sit with Ben and ask him. Uh, okay.
Well, I hesitate to be the one who's bringing everything up, because I got cupcakes waiting, but um, we haven't discussed fees.
Yeah, and I was thinking of another meeting for the fees.
Okay. We're going to get feedback on that one.
Yeah.
Whatever.
And a good neighbor brochure. So the next couple of Mondays, we have the twenty-first or the twenty-eighth, do we have any conflicts with that, with any of those two days?
The twenty-first is President's Day.
Oh, let's do another holiday, keep it going.
Yay.
Twenty-eighth is my other board meeting.
Okay, so twenty-first is good for you?
I can't do twenty-first, yeah.
You know, the sooner the better, we can knock it out and maybe have it ready for the public hearing.
Twenty-eighth works.
Twenty-first works?
Oh, yeah, uh, that's President's Day.
Is that an issue?
Yeah. I I, yeah, I'm working, I work on, I work on President's Day.
Okay, all right, uh, what what about.
Personally, it's an issue, but if you guys, if it's, if you guys want to do the twenty-first, that's fine, um.
Twenty-second, uh, Tuesday?
Yeah, yeah, I could, I could.
Twenty-second, I can do.
You can do twenty-second.
Is that sufficient?
Twenty-second at six o'clock?
Two o'clock, Tuesday, yeah.
Sufficient notice.
Two o'clock?
Yep.
No, I mean, Tuesday.
Yeah, six o'clock I can do, two o'clock I cannot.
The twenty-second.
What do you guys think, Nancy? Do you have any idea about your?
Uh, the fee schedule and the brochure for the good neighbor.
A workshop.
A workshop. Uh, okay, before we close. Is everyone happy?
Is anyone happy?
Is any.
I know technically we're not open to public comment, but if I may, thirty seconds.
Just going to give everybody a few seconds.
Yeah, I uh I agree a lot with Mopasette regarding separate rules for local residents, I can say that many of us here make a living, or try to make a living uh by doing this, um, and some of it is really the reason that we've been staying and put roofs down here, especially for my case, so. Uh, I'm I'm very much in favor of having different sets of rules for folks who do shandigan just full-time, I think.
We can't, we're not making different sets of rules, and we can't.
Uh, the permanent process.
Priorities.
Priorities, we can do.
Special consideration.
Well, for you.
Prioritizing low, you know, permanent residents.
I'd like to just say thank you for um seeing this, steering this process, and, you know, it's been a long road. Most of us were here through the um, what was it, a year and a bit, year and a half of the um, the committee, which.
It's longer every time we talk about it.
Yes. Which made the recommendations, uh, I was one of the original Airbnb's that, uh, twelve, twelve years we've been going, I believe with that complaint.
Well, see, I just can't.
Yes, keep, keep opening up the book, uh, it has allowed, uh, my family to grow up here, we have two spaces on our property, we we lived there, right on Main Street. Uh, there were, thanks Elizabeth for bringing me up, I I was very concerned about um, the multiple dwelling thing, um, and and not being able to operate on a multi-family or uh, more, uh, when you have multiple dwellings. Uh, we have the other asset, that's why many people do, so I didn't really, I wasn't really sure about the interpretation of that, but I think that's been sort of clarified. For tax purposes, I think, I'm a, I I'm a multi-family now, but really we're a single-family, none of our spaces.
I get it, I get it.
Have kitchens or any, you know, the the two rental spaces, but I was unclear about uh D of the short-term rental regulations, the short-term rental shall be limited to one rental at a time on any given day.
Yeah, that's going to.
I I looked at it again and then I thought, oh, well, does that mean like, I can't rent to two different people in the same space on a, on a certain day?
Well, it's not even on.
Yeah, that, that wording got dropped.
It's already.
Exactly, yeah, we don't do that sort of rent here.
It's already been removed from our.
But so that's all about that one.
That's out, yeah.
That's out, that's out.
Okay, but I.
I'm looking on where?
But but thanks fully, my hood, uh, one minute, one minute. What what is the process, like, when is the public hearing slated for in?
March seventh, the public hearing is.
Okay.
Is going to be at at six o'clock.
Okay, and then the bill will be slated thirty days, sixty days after that for passage?
That depends how the public hearing goes.
I mean, yes, it depends on how the public hearing goes, if there is a gathering like this, it it could get passed that night, uh.
Have you dealt with Perry before?
I'm sorry?
Have you dealt with him before, pass something in one night?
Uh, so if there aren't any substantive changes, we can move forward and agree to move forward and and pass the law that night, meaning that it'll be thirty days from then into April before we really, you know, we'll have to build something to get it on the website so that you can download the applications and run them here as quickly as possible. All of them.
I just, um, you know, I have a lot of work coming my way, but I'm blown away by the work that the committee did, it's amazing.
Yeah.
Like, the stuff that you guys all came up with over the past two years, it's, it blows other, in my opinion, municipalities out of the water, your exit report's amazing. I've never gotten to say that yet, help me, because I came in at the end, and there's a different code enforcement officer, and it felt, however, people, but I see the late work, I feel it done myself, and I think it's great we picked this up and that we're here, because in my office every day, I need some regulations. I need to be able to point to something else, I need to be able to enforce something when everybody else is held to a different standard, if they have special use permit or if they just own their home, so it's really great that we're here, that's all I.
Thank you. Is that right?
Jay's got a question.
Who's the attorney that's actually working on this?
Ben Galey. Ben Galey, from Jacobowitz and Gubbinson.
He's the building and zoning attorney, who's that, who works with all building and zoning laws and code enforcement officers and all sorts of. And he's up there, they've always been our represent, representatives for the building and zoning office.
Somebody from that, from.
Is that his attorney?
Yes.
Please don't harass him.
Larry's kind of honest.
Uh, just pointing for, uh, one, Sarah, when you said before about the authority, she, if she's not a hired consultant, she's got to come to the board with the cost of the consultant and then be approved.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's not that she just goes and will it be like.
No, no, no.
Uh, secondly, the, you're supposed to have ten days for any public meetings, so seven months, gathering week, once a week, is not legal?
Joyce told me seven days.
Joyce is wrong.
Okay.
Joyce, it's ten days, it's ten days. It's three days for emergency meeting.
Right.
Notice for one day, uh, speaking.
Right.
It's only ten days, maybe.
I I'm happy with the discussion, I came in here and it looks, look like the whole regulations on paper, we're going to put everybody as now S T R business, out of business, which I know is not the intent, and I think all of the points were addressed, and I'm happy with the way that they're addressed.
Okay.
It looks like it's going to be a pretty decent product. And and uh, Kevin, I had my hand up when you were speaking, I was really happy with what you said, but the reason I had my hand up was the credentials actually going to be, the code enforcement officer coming for the inspection has to give you credentials, that's the way I'm reading it.
Yeah.
Am I right, Peter? Yeah.
Oh, he's really sure this day.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you all for the work, uh, just to clarify my point, um, maybe just specific to me, but I'm a full-time resident, but I own two properties. I just want to clarify the one license per owner, is that for owner per property?
It's going to be a license per property.
Okay.
When I was, had my mind in one owner, one property, that's where that came from, that verbiage, so it'll be one license per property.
Thank you, thank you again for your work.
Okay. What do you want to do with the meeting next week, Tuesday, still go with it?
Just attempting to find the notice requirements, I mean, I see something in a good meeting's law about.
It's just a.
Less, well, and and not, I don't see any requirement for.
Hello.
The length of time the notice must proceed, the meeting varies depending on when the meeting is scheduled, meetings.
Okay.
I got Joyce.
There you go. It's Joyce, yeah.
Joyce says public hearings need ten days.
Public hearings.
Meetings, how many for a meeting?
For a workshop.
She says five.
Five.
So we can do a workshop next Tuesday, that's not a problem? Joyce says it's okay.
Okay, make a motion, we have that meeting Tuesday, six o'clock.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
Thanks.
Did you want to say something?
Everything's great.
I was quite, I was not here at the beginning, but the the thing, applications, if they're on a first-year basis, was when we talked about prioritize these people who live here, I mean, I can't imagine, you know, you have, okay, day one, and everybody's like crowding the door to get their application in to the first, first year, but that has to be there.
I hope so.
We, we, we really, that would be so fun, um, I don't, I think we tabled that and haven't figured that one out yet.
We haven't figured it out yet, but essentially, you know, it's.
It's not very confident when a lottery would depend on.
But they, you know, like I said, right now, as it stands, even with all the commercials, everybody listed on Airbnb with the county today is under three hundred.
And logistically.
And that included people who are out of town and and commercials.
And just logistically speaking, if you all sign up on the same day, and then in twenty twenty-three, you all sign up on the same day, and then twenty twenty-four, you all sign up the same day. So I think, logistically, at least the way I see it, we'll probably have to space the amount of permits out, you know, whether it's fifty the first month, fifty the second month, fifty the third month, but we'll, we'll work it out, we're not going to make you guys fight to the death for it.
First year, maybe we can just get a workshop.
I'm a big fan of Battle Royale, yeah.
I'm looking forward to hearing more of your time.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll keep you apprised.
Well, that's what Lexington did, they had a permanent process for folks who lived out of town and capped it very long, I think it was uh fifteen or twenty. But if you were a full-time resident, I think you was pull out a form to get a fire inspection, and that was it.
No matter how many properties you had.
Regardless of number of properties, uh, there was no cap, there was a very, very.
Regardless of number of properties, there was no cap, there was a very, very simplified permit process. Everyone who was a weekender out of town, they fell into a different bucket, had to go through a different application process with a limited number of permits. I know this is my, my work, but I have friends who live in the city, I'm actually on brochure, it's just over the cabinet line.
With, with the, with, with the non-resident cap, and, do you want me to keep that at also only one per non-resident? Or you just want to do a cap, and it doesn't matter how many they have?
I think that rule would still apply, right? Doesn't matter, it's a, it's a separation of license, not necessarily of rules, like you said. So we were saying one, one, a license per resident.
Well, we basically threw that out when you said that you wanted somebody to have four on a property, that would be four licenses.
No, that would be one license per property, because it's one property.
Where did we?
That's, I mean, that was the decision coming out of the report, out of the committee.
So you would count it as spending instead, so even if they had four cabins, if they had two bedrooms in each cabin, we would charge them, because I have it basically.
Well, if the fee structure is based on bedrooms, yeah, you'd, you'd base it on the total number and one license for the entire property.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's, we.
Easy.
We didn't want someone to have to get four licenses just because they had two units in one property, because then if you, if they had a violation in one, how do we keep track of which ones shut down, what if other three are opening, what if it's a communal, do you have to spend four licenses? Yeah, it was just, it was just a one license if you had multiple units on a property. It's just, I think it's just unmanageable any other way.
Got it, got it, yeah, 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 makes so much sense.
Meeting's been posted.
Anyone else have a question?
Where's the best place to find when these meetings are happening? I had to call Sarah for a second question last week, and I found out about it, so I was.
If you go to shandaken.us, our town website, usually the town clerk posts a meeting right up.
Shandaken-ny.com.
Okay, yeah, I've been there.
Right on the, right on the first page.
You're scrolling. Okay.
And this meeting has already been posted.
Thank you.
Uh, make a motion to be closed.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Uh, good job, good work, guys.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.